Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the July 9th, 2019 Norfolk Planning Board Meeting. Please be advised that the meeting is being audio and videotaped for consumption at home. And if you need to speak, please address the chair and also use the microphones. Do we have microphones? We don't have microphones. Speak loudly. All right. Let's see. Where do we want to start here? Rich, you want to start at 113 North or you want to go down into the old business?
So, Mr. Chairman, we'll have to start at old business because we need Aaron Hunt to come.
Yep.
Yeah, for the quorum on 113 because Mr. Wilton, Mr. Byron, Mr. Hunt for that one. So, Oakno State's.
All right, so we'll start there. Okay. Aaron is coming, but we said he'll be a little late, so we'll start with the... Okay, Oakno State's old card person. Why don't you go ahead and tell us about it?
Sure. So, I had a meeting with Mr. Roween, sorry, DPW Director and Assistant DPW Director. One thing that initially brought us out there was as you come into the subdivision, on the right-hand side, there's a bunch of, I guess it ended up being granite, I guess, was the predominant out there, some of the rocks, and come up with a resolution to finish that up for the subdivision. That was how we initially started out there. And what we discussed was actually bringing in some fill material and some loam and leave it there, but put in the fill and some loam and seed it naturalizes, so just make it almost like a metal kind of mix, so it's a low maintenance and it'll be, they'll really naturalize it because of those woodlands on the other side, so it would fit in better. And it wouldn't be, the concern was with the rocks that are there, they could be an attractive nuisance to the kids.
Do we have any photographs? Yeah, that would...
I don't have any... No, actually. If you go into the...
Do we have some in the server?
Don't know if we have photos in the server. So, you have to imagine rocks that are very large, that are somewhat jagged, and, because I don't think we have them in this...
Well, I think I got some.
Oh, hey. It's good to be better. So, you see, there's another? So, off to the right-hand side.
It doesn't show it.
Doesn't? Is there another photo on there? Two more.
They have the corner shot.
That's not a great shot, yeah. Try one more.
Let's try the last one. It's being edited in another program.
All right, well, if we go back to the first one, I guess, that would probably help. So, if you look on the right-hand side, you get a sense of the rocks that are there. They go up on the embankment. So, we talked about just bringing in some fill, fill it in.
If I can interrupt a little bit. That rock, it slopes up probably about 18 feet, and we had to blast, and all the rock was fractured, so it didn't blast very well.
Just one thing, sir, would you just identify us?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm Todd Roween, managing the subdivision there.
Right.
In construction. So, originally, the plan shows a two-to-one slope to be left in place, which I created that.
Yeah.
But, you know, like Rich said, there's some complaints about maybe it could be a heavy... So, we talked about it out in the field with the DPW Director, as well as maybe building a wall, a small wall in front of that.
Mm-hmm.
That way, we could fill over it without it, you know, without the fill being mounted almost. Like, build a small wall, then stop the slope.
Sure.
And it would be very attractive that way.
Okay. And have you got a drawing of what you're going to do?
No, I kind of just have to create it. I got to plant some boulders as, to create a wall, and I got to use what's on site. We have some boulders on site. It's kind of start and make it presentable.
Have you changed that since I met with you out there a year ago, Todd?
What's that?
Is it in the same state as when I met with you a year ago?
Oh, no, it's all, it's all...
So, you made some, you hammered some of that down?
Yeah. We had to blast it.
Right.
Because we couldn't hammer it. We tried to hammer it for weeks and we couldn't hammer it.
Is that, is that a butter still had issues because of the danger?
Yeah, I think he's not happy with, he thinks it might be unsafe.
So, if you fall from the top, you're going to come down at least six, seven feet?
No, it's a steady slope, but it's just a matter of, there's a bunch of two-foot boulders kind of creating that slope, so there's some voids and such in there. So, it's almost like a heavy riprap slope.
So, when you're through, you put some boulders out front, create a wall, fill it in, and there'd be grass all the way down?
Yeah, grass, like Rich said, some kind of a...
More of a metal mixed grass, not, you know, not something that's going to be...
But not rocks, that's the point.
Not rocks, correct.
You just want to make it safe so somebody falls from up top, they don't get...
Yeah, and I'm okay with doing whatever. I just am trying to make...
Okay. Can you, does that, can you, does it help if you made a few platforms there and stepped it down?
That's what we talked about, starting at the bottom and working up, and maybe you have to, maybe do another smaller one higher, see what works. Because there is some piece of ledge that's still protruding. We have to work around those and kind of incorporate those into anything we build.
Because if you had a couple of level platforms, they fall down, and you loom the platforms, you just got that stabilized with vegetation, it leaves somebody falls, number one, they're not falling too far, and number two, they're going onto a softer surface, you know?
Yeah.
And if you've got any, if you've got any shot pieces sticking up, you can hammer those down, so the thing can be at least loomed and greater without, you know, abutments coming through it.
Yeah, that's kind of the idea we're looking to do.
Because the rock is sitting on the homeowner's property at Viennese, so it...
Right.
Some of it is there.
Right. So, the, I mean, the concern was, I think more from not his property, like him, you know, coming to the top going down, is that if you, if you look at it, it's like going out to the ocean on the rocks, and you want to, little kids want to, you know, do what little kids want to do, you know?
Well, that's an improvement, because when I was out there, the neighbors complained that one of his kids fell off the side, that they'd kill themselves. So, if that has been, if that's been mitigated, that's a plus.
That's, that's better, yeah. It's kind of a trade-off, I guess, but yeah, he'll have to mitigate it. But that was more of an update. The reason why it's on the agenda was while we're out there, we're discussing getting the road moving towards completion to get it finished, and similar to what, you know, the board, we had discussion a few back in May with Tailwind Circle about instead of doing the granite curbing on the road, as due to the monolithic burn, which, that was something that was discussed with DPW on site. And so, in the case of the other one that was done, trying to get ahead of it, before he does the work, come in, discuss it with the board, the preference would be to do the monolithic burn as opposed to doing the granite curb. And he can do it because he hasn't done the rest of the work there, so I wanted to...
You know, in our regulations calling for the slope granite, Bob McGee has been getting, trying to change that to, Beram Walter was around for years now. Previous members of the board wanted to keep that slope granite for a reason, so they actually bypassed what Bob McGee's suggestion was in for maintaining the roads. He thought monolithic was a better choice. And we have to be careful because it's in a regulation, and a lot of people that are all in process now have just spent a lot of money for the, for the granite curbing, and now to haphazardly just change ones. It gets us into a spot, right, which is the reason. So, maybe we should bring this thing up right away at one of our next meetings, Walter, and decide if this current board thinks there's still a need to keep slope granite, or whether we want to change, as some of us did years ago, to the monolithic burn so everybody could be, you know, treated fairly. Because the, the cost differential is substantial. It's not five, 10 times the cost to do slope granite, so it's a big consideration. All right. I'm willing to do that if we can get Mr. McGee here next time and talk about that and make a decision among the board members. We would have to go through with a regulation change. We'd have to go through a public hearing and all of that, yeah. We need to at least do. Maybe we can discuss it first and see what the feeling is of the board, and then go through the formality. Yes, agreed. If they agree that that would be better. Anyway, in this case, what are we going to do? What do you recommend we do here?
Well, I think, again, we probably should, we'll bring it up for discussion. We can have Bob come in, because he's not here tonight, to talk about it, but general, his general preference was to...
Is it one with the curb?
Yeah, from a maintenance standpoint. So, there's a point where it's, it can be done in the construction process, it's not past that point, but...
I'd be more inclined to give him a break and vote for it. He made that front look good.
I'll make it look great.
Keep the neighbors... I know, you get some flow to do it, all right, keep the neighbors from, you know, haunting us about issues. You make that look great and come back, and in the meantime, we won't be able to meet any one anyway, right?
Yep. And actually, Bob is here, the neighbor. He's in the back, so...
I...
He just popped, he just popped in, so...
So, do you think you can make that happen, make that look nice and safe?
Yeah.
And then by the time our next meeting, maybe we'll have talked about this and... Or at least started the process of talking about it. Is Bob for something like that, Bob?
Yeah. I have no problem with the curbing or anything, I just wanted, any leverage I can get to make sure that that rock pile is being safe.
Okay, all right.
Do you think you, I guess, question, you'll be able to do the work before August 5th? Is that what we're talking about?
No, I don't think we will be able to know.
We're talking about the rocks.
Oh, the rocks, so I...
I don't know. It's pretty busy right now, but I'll work on it. Once the machine gets back there, we don't have any equipment on the site right now, but when we come back to wrap everything up, we'll address it. It'd be nice to get it done early September probably, so I can plant it and it will grow.
Exactly, you're good, yeah.
That's kind of the plan.
Now, you have notes here about voting on a minor modification. This is what you're referring to.
That's what I was speaking to, yeah, the minor, relative to the, just to the curbing.
So, you want us to put forward a motion to, to change it and call that a minor modification?
Well, I think...
I want to hold off until the front's dressed up. You want to hold off? Till the front is dressed up and is safe. Okay, all right, and then we'll agree to it. All right, fair enough.
Okay.
Anything else on this topic, sir?
No.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, you want to do Bristol Pond next?
Yeah, Elizabeth, if you wanted to, you couldn't speak on Bristol because Aaron's not here yet, so should that be continued to September?
Yes, thank you very much. Because we said we could...
Good evening, gentlemen.
Well, we didn't open...
It's not a public hearing. It's sort of nice to see you every month. Again, missing you, I'm not here anymore.
Any more definitions for us?
What's that?
Any more definitions for us today?
Definitions? Oh, no, no definitions, none to us.
Always like to learn.
No. I think you're being cheeky. Rich posted, I think, what I thought was an extremely informative, educational, and optimistic meeting with several of the residents at Bristol Pond in discussion of the open space and the reconfiguration of that. And the consensus is very much that they're very satisfied with the trees shown on the plan. There are only nine trees yet to be planted. They were very happy with the variety of those trees and don't want to change that in any way, shape, or form. They're satisfied with that. What they would like, which I think can be easily accomplished, is they would like the understory, the undergrowth, there's a couple of forsythia bushes up there and some shrubs that are not surviving, some because of the deer decimating them, but they just don't look very nice. They would like to have those removed, and instead of restoring any shrubs there, they are suggesting that they will come up with a list of a few more trees of the variety that they would like to suggest going in, both to make up for those plantings that are coming out, and because, as we've discussed before, where there's basically a credit to the town because of the cul-de-sac that we underplanted, they, I too believe, were totally satisfied with what's in that cul-de-sac. They don't want to see anything more go in there, but we could maybe add some more trees to the open space design in lieu of, as a credit for what we owe you on that. So, I thought we made great progress. I thought it was a very positive meeting, and he indicated that he would come back to me. Jeff Kane sort of headed up the meeting. He will, and assets, very quickly come back to us with those trees that they would like to see added to that area.
Should they go bypass with a landscape plan with shrubbery in it? They're going to bypass that?
Yeah, I think so. I think so, because once, I think, once you saw the plan in front of you, you saw that it really, there isn't much lacking. You know, some of the trees, a few trees need to be replaced, and when the street trees go in, and he's, I think, a couple of people at that meeting had the sort of, able to visualize things, that they can see what it's going to look like. He said, once these street trees are in, it is going to be fine. We don't want to clutter this up. We just want a couple more trees and get rid of the, the undergrowth and a couple trees that need to be replaced. And I can say that I am absolutely certain that the developer will be very happy to do that. So, I think we're making great progress there. As you know, he's gotten the sidewalk in. He's working with Eversource. Eversource is now doing what they do to get the power and do what they, they, to place the, the streetlights. The streetlights are, if not there, they have been ordered on site with the, with that vendor. So, as soon as they sort things out with Eversource, they will go in. And same thing on the guard rail, that has been ordered and paid for, it's just a question of fitting it in to the, whoever the installer's scheduled. So, I think things are moving along really quite nicely there. So, I just wanted to report into you on that and let you know we're, we're moving ahead positively.
Rich, on that, on that meeting that she's referring to, did you take minutes? Is there a list, so we capture it for the record?
Because I can put together minutes for him.
I think you should, not for me, but for the record.
Yeah, no, for the record.
So, you know, we document what everybody agreed.
And I can share my notes with you as well.
One thing, we are going to check in with DPW on the, on the street trees, because there are calls for the oaks, the red oaks, I think.
I don't think they want the red oak, that's what I understand.
Because the red oaks could...
They're terrible.
They're terrible for...
Damage the sidewalk, right?
For a street tree, so, going to talk to DPW to see what makes sense to swap it out.
I'm sure, Michael, good. The other thing that Jeff had done, which was extraordinarily helpful, and I wish I had thought about this at the very first meeting, was he basically color-coded the trees that are in and the trees are not in. So, it was very easy to visualize. What he had indicated, he's going to send that to Rich, so you'll, you can quote that into your minutes. And then he's also going to provide a new one showing exactly where he, they would like to see the new trees, the supplemental trees. So, I think we're making good progress there.
Good, great, sounds good.
All right?
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you for the time to let you know that.
Well, we can go to...
Westfield, do you want to do Westfield next?
Let's skip Westfield, do Norfolk Landing.
Norfolk Landing, yes. We, Chris is, I saw Chris come in, is he still there? Yeah, there he is.
So, I did forward to the board a minor modification for the items that we, the board discussed at the May 1st meeting.
Yep.
Which was changing the trees to maples, as opposed to, there was some hawthorns and crabapple trees that need to be planted from, from the swale back to the open space. And getting the sense that that was a positive change, the trees are in, so they're actually planted now, catch that up. And this is one referred to earlier about Bob. So, that was changed out in the field before, again, to the board, and so, what we're essentially doing is catching up with that change, which was to put the cake cot, the monolithic cake cot burn in there, in the development, which is item number one. The, the second item was the trail head was put in with some, there's some ties with some wood mulch and a trailhead marker, and then instead of putting wood chips along the layout of Priscilla where this trail would be, is just kept the leaf understory, put the, some of the branches that were down under there and create a nice naturalized pathway as opposed to going in, and putting a wood chip, which could be a maintenance issue in the, I mean, it looks, it looks like a trail that will walk through the woods, so, and is defined by having the trees along that. The, the other item was, instead of putting a trail, again, wood chips between lot three and four, is if you want to get to your, back to the open space, you would just, you can walk through the grass swale that's there now, which actually is very walkable. So, those are the three items that were discussed as far as, actually, sorry, four, four items from the main meeting. I thought it made, was appropriate to just have a vote for those changes for the record as we move forward. The ASBIL plans have been updated. We'll go back, I'll have Bob go back through, so we can move this towards acceptance for November, yeah.
Chris, would you like to comment?
Good evening. Yeah, well, I just, I think, as Rich says, the items just discussed were something we, we all agreed on, you know, a month ago.
Yeah.
And since then, I believe that, and then we had an in-house meeting a few weeks ago, that was just regarding some plantings, and from my view, those have been all in place, and I did a small ASBIL plan and sent that to Rich of the locations of such. I guess I just wanted to kind of hit home that it's my view that we've given all the other requirements have been achieved, and just hoping to find out what would the next step be and make sure we can keep, keep some momentum here.
So, next step?
Go ahead.
Well, first, this would be step one.
So, these are the three changes we talked about.
Yeah, technically, there's four of them there, yeah.
And the ASBIL plan has been changed to adopt all these changes?
Yes.
All right, so the ASBIL plan that we're hopefully going to be signing has all the current changes, including this modification we're about to vote on.
The, one of them, you won't see on there because it's, it's not there.
Okay.
Well, actually, two of them, I should say.
They're not needed to be there.
The trails.
Well, but the trail head...
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, but the, the bulk of the trail is not going to be there because you didn't put it in.
Oh, the material on there.
Yeah, the material on the ground.
That's already ASBIL anyway, so it's fine.
And the same thing with the swale, we're just going, we'll show it on there.
Seems to me there's one other issue that we talked about, if I remember it's right. Wasn't there some plantings between lots that we were dealing with?
Yes, and that's, we spent, I had a crew out there for a couple of days. There was tons of trees done, and he's been watering them for me a couple of times a week, just on his discretion, as a whole, and that's reflected on a print that I gave Rich, and there's some green clouded areas, which shows all the new plantings as well as existing plantings, you know, because there was already existing plantings, and we just enhanced that and added places.
Got you, all right. And you've got that plan?
I do have that plan.
Okay, all right.
Well, if I haven't forwarded to the board, I'll move forward if I haven't already.
All right, so we need a motion to, to accept these as a minor modification, correct?
Correct.
So, vote. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of accepting these as minor modifications, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is an unanimous vote. So...
So, then the next step would be to communicate, I'll communicate with the town administrator about getting this placed on the warrant for Fall Town Meeting.
Now, we have to vote to approve them?
And then in turn, he'll come back, he'll come back to the board for a recommendation.
We just accept it as a minor modification, correct?
Right.
Now, we have to approve that minor modification? Yes, procedurally.
Yes, correct, sorry.
So, we...
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Motion to approve the minor modification for, is there a subdivision, Chris?
Norfolk Landing.
Norfolk Landing. Second. All who was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous vote. Thank you.
Great.
And, that's, he must have the original that I can sign, this is printed at home.
Oh, yeah. So, then, like I said, the next step would be, I'll talk to the town administrator about, because it was, we had an article ready to go to town meeting.
Yep.
So, place the article, I think the date, if I understand, is November 19th would be town meeting, but between that, then the board will, the board selectmen, that is, will hold the hearing, a meeting, to make the recommendation, and they'll write back to the planning board. So, they'll still come back to the planning board, but let you know on the next step.
Okay, so, at some point in the near future, we'll have another date for a meeting?
Yes.
And that will be selective?
Correct, yeah.
Then there'd be selectmen, in theory, one meeting, and then one more planning board?
Yeah, it should be one more planning board meeting.
Okay. Okay. Next agenda item is the Westfield Drive.
Yeah, so, similar pathway to Westfield Drive. I know, I have to go back, refresh my memory on the, on the punch list that was left. We'll get an article submitted to, to the board selectmen for street acceptance, and follow that through. I got to read through the, I haven't done my full homework yet, but I know you sent me the title, so...
Yeah. Do we have the ASBIL to that? Is it all complete?
Yes.
Yeah, we do have the ASBIL.
ASBIL was reviewed by the engineers?
Yes.
It was, yes. You should, so, give me the bridge version or the consent, the short version of the roadway.
Yes, so, so where we are at the moment, we do have Beta's review. I've taken Beta's three items, or I guess it totals eight items, and I've done a letter, Rich has that, addressed to the board, and that answers each thing. Some things are just an answer, other things are action items, and the action items that were done, there's a couple of photos that I supplied to Rich, but my view is that the all items on that Beta review are complete.
Did Beta get those answers back to the questions?
I don't think I deal directly with Beta, I was going through Rich.
Can I have a copy of the, the punch list?
No, we have to, essentially, one, it got held up when it first came forward because of...
So, I think the plan is to send the, the punch list, the answers to the questions over to Beta, you have Beta review them and give us the net result, right?
Yeah, sure.
If there's anything that Beta has out as an open issue, we can decide on that ourselves, just like we did the other suit.
Yes, I don't, from my perspective, they're, they're real easier items that I would think it's administrative of the board would be able to look at, simple enough.
Sure. All right, you've got the, you've got his response, right?
Yeah.
And it can go to Beta, right?
Correct, yeah. So, I think we can have it on for the...
Are you looking for Fall approval also at the Fall Town Meeting?
Ideally, we would have already had a spring approval, so I'm definitely behind the April of this.
You're looking for the Fall?
But 100% looking for Fall. But there's been some confusion here. This is that Westfield Drive where...
Two lots, straight.
It's two lots, and we've got that, you had us do a subdivision approval, a application for that. So, there's been some real, lots of confusion as to getting it accepted, and I don't know where that stands internally with you guys. I don't have any assurance that that's really worked out, and I don't know what I do next. Right now, we have, there's two houses there for sale, one is under agreement, just had an appraisal, and the appraiser is asking what's going on with road acceptance, and I, I can tell him things, but they're not factual things.
But you're, you're working up a subdivision approval on that, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, same process of regular subdivision, just two lots. So, what's, what's open about it? Are you looking for waivers from a regular?
No.
I'm confused.
And I apologize, I haven't got, to take a look at that title exam from the, from[1696.81] And I apologize, I haven't got to take a look at that title exam from your title examiner, but, so Persil was an old layout, they had made, went through a definitive subdivision, make improvements to it for the two homes. But, um, the interest in ownership of the roadway, whether the butters own interest or it, or the, they have interest in it, who's going to convey the fee to the road to the town, or does the town need to take it by eminent domain?
So, right now, the roadway is owned fifty-fifty by people on either side.
That would be...
So...
Which isn't uncommon in the town of Norfolk.
No, no, it's not uncommon.
In the past, in the past, what we've done, as long as it meets the subdivision approval criteria, the goes to town meeting, and the town takes it by, whether it be eminent domain or whatever, because it can't lay in limbo with people, only fifty percent of it approved road. If that was a planted road, and that's, that's an approved way, so. And that's happened, I think, in a few other ones, that actually happened in the road that I had also, where years ago, the neighbors owned half of the roadway, and the roadway was an accepted, approved through a subdivision plan, so it stays in limbo until the town just accepts it.
Yeah.
So, I think that's what you're talking about, the same process?
Yes, and I don't get in the weeds on that piece of it.
No, you don't.
You know, I'm doing, I've got the plan, and I've done with the plan requires.
It's got nothing to do with you, actually.
So, I just wanted to make sure that we were getting some traction on that. I know it's, time goes by quick.
Once that gets approved and goes to town council, they start to prepare it for a warrant item, that's when that'll come up. And they'll change the language on the warrant, and based on the situation of the ownership of that roadway, so that'll be that, when that all comes to being.
And that'll all get done before town meeting?
Right, exactly.
Some before and some after.
Excellent.
I'll give you, so, we'll put it on for the, for August 5th, just as an update, okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, great.
Alright, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
What do you want to do next?
113. 113, we can have the 113.
113, yeah, alright. 113, um, we need a reading into the...
Does continue.
Continuing, alright. Alright, so, 113 North Street, three lot definitive subdivision, continued from our last meeting, who's here to speak today?
Good evening, I'm Brian Weiner from Dye McKenzie.
Yep.
I want to just give you a brief summary of some of the things we've followed up with since the last meeting. Just the basics are, we got heard back from the fire department, they issued a letter, we also worked out the water services.
What did the letter say from the fire department?
The basis of the plan was okay, I submitted.
Okay.
The criteria, it was acceptable. You didn't have any concerns?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We also heard back about the water service.
From the water department?
From the water department, and there's two existing curb shut offs, and so we'll have two existing services to...
One of which will serve two lots?
No, they're both going to be separate, and I could show you.
Well, you have three lots, right?
We have three lots, so one will have no change, it has its own service today.
Oh, okay.
Which is parcel...
And there's two additional lots.
Correct, which is parcel one. Parcel two, which is a new home, will have its own service from an existing curb shut off. And parcel three will have its own service from an existing curb shut off, so completely separate.
Yeah.
Which is something that we had talked about at the last meeting. We also added a roof drain system, parcel two.
Do we have that, any writing from the DPW?
Mm-hmm, it was an email.
And the contractor we had on Chris's before, when we talked about, he said, she said, the water service, okay, so now we have our...
Yeah, we have an email from Alphy.
Good, give it to him.
Yes.
That was...
By the way, he was surprised it was two there, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I showed him the total, he saw, he didn't even know they were there.
Right.
We worked through the review comments, and I don't know if it makes sense to go through them, but I believe that they've all been addressed. Don't have any technical items outstanding.
I just want to report on the ZVA action.
Yeah.
I think that would be important.
Good evening, Edward Cannon, on behalf of the applicant, we were before the ZVA last month, asking that the proposed division of the lots has a setback encroachment here with a fieldstone garage, it's old, it's fairly historic, we're hoping to keep that. And then, there's also, there were two or three sheds within the setback parcel three at the back of the hammerhead that would violate. So, we asked for relief from each of those, and I haven't seen the written decision, but my understanding is that the ZVA is okay with the fieldstone bond remaining, but they do want the sheds that are located on parcel three to comply with proper setbacks. So, we're certainly amenable to a requirement, that we comply with whatever they order, but essentially, that's my understanding, is what they've ordered.
But we'll make their finding part of our conditions.
Fine.
Do you want to touch on some of these items in the Beta letter? The July 3rd letter from Beta, just a couple of items we might consider. Second page, condition W five there, consider having the applicant provide sidewalk funds to the town in lieu of construction. Now, there's no sidewalks on that street, but we do have a sidewalk fund, which we have put money into from developments where there has been a grant by this board to deviate from the requirements. So, money in lieu of is a consideration, and Rich will think about that and come up with what he thinks is a recommended number, and we want you to consider that. Where's the sidewalk going from and to, and...
There's no existing sidewalk today.
There's nothing anywhere around.
It's rural.
Talking of payment and whoa.
Payment and whoa.
Payment and whoa. No, John, well, we need the money for sidewalk improvement in the town, you know, if you can't, if you can't do it.
But then again, there's consistency involved. In the last four or five years, I don't remember taking any sidewalk money from anybody. Our rules call for two sidewalks in each subdivision. I think the last one that actually put money into a sidewalk fund was me, and that was fourteen years ago. And I put money into a, well, anyways, I know I put money into a sidewalk fund to cover Grove Street. Eleven years later, when the cost of sidewalks have tripled, they called me and they asked me if they could perhaps use my sidewalk funds to start a sidewalk on Midway Brand. So, the seven thousand feet of sidewalk that I had paid for, when they finally get around to using it, ended up paying for about twelve hundred feet. So, you know, with these people, personally speaking, they're having their own homestead, that they've lived there forever, and they're now developing it, and they met all of our criteria. Personally, I wouldn't be in favor of charging the money for that, that's my own opinion.
Okay. Well, we can have the other members of the board consider that, what do you fellows think?
Just have one.
Well, because he was, alright, we have one other member of the board.
Yeah.
I don't know what to think. John makes an interesting case, but I don't have the same history that he does. If our bylaws say that someone should be paying into a fund as part of development, then they should be paying into a fund as part of the development.
So, for the last two years that we've approved approximately six subdivisions where nobody has contributed to the fund, what do you say of that?
Well, as I recall, subdivisions required sidewalks on both sides of the lot. And we have agreed to put sidewalks on one side of the lot.
But technically, the person that's bypassing both sidewalks pays the funding for the second sidewalk into our fund?
But they're still supplying one sidewalk.
True.
So, they're supplying something towards the betterment of sidewalks in the town.
Right.
So, I can't, I can't at least tell you that the last subdivision, Norway Farms, which is in the back of the room, they did, they are putting in sidewalks off-site, on Medway.
Are there previous historical examples of a similar estate development, or are we talking about...
Norway Farms also has a special criteria, because Norway Farms is providing connectivity from one cul-de-sac, Crestbrook, to their subdivision, because we gave them a bypass, because they didn't have to connect to Crestbrook. So, really, that's not our regulation, putting sidewalk money in per se, that's just a matter of a switch and swap to provide safety with a concrete use for it that's going in immediately.
Why don't we look into what the history is in estate developments?
I think we should, I think we should, because we should not be inconsistent, I agree with you, John.
Absolutely not.
And if we've been inconsistent, we ought to clean that up and take a policy and stick to it, and...
The Pulte folks that owe us five thousand feet of sidewalk, for the one they put in, and they owed us two.
Yeah.
Well, alright, so, we will, we will take that under advisement and get our act together and respond to you. Let's see, what else have we got here? There's a couple of minor points, want a street sign, you gonna put a street sign up there, alright?
We will, it's...
Is it gonna be marked private way?
Yeah, it's a private way, so we don't have a spec for it, an exact construction detail.
Right.
This time.
Yeah, okay.
Thought it might be more appropriate to have as a condition.
Yeah, and we will, we will want to name it, so...
Selectmen name typically, don't they? Yeah, selectmen name the streets.
Well, yeah, it should have a name, I guess that's, so...
You could recommend a name, and selectmen get the final say.
Do you folks have a family name you'd like to use?
We do.
Yeah, so, I would recommend that to the selectmen, and say, we recommend the street be called John Smith Road, or whatever you have in mind. Alright, thank you very much, anything else you'd like to contribute?
That's it, I appreciate it, I think we've gone through all the technical...
Yeah.
Back and forth.
Okay.
So, I did, if you want to...
Go ahead.
I did work on a draft decision for it, I haven't finalized it yet, but we do have a draft that we can circulate, I know the board has, they haven't had a chance to look at it, but what I thought, if we can close the hearing and then finish up the decision for the next meeting, the August 5th meeting, and I could circulate to the applicant and their engineer and review it.
Alright.
For completion for the...
Does that hold you guys up at all?
No.
Okay, okay.
If we can close the hearing and work out the paperwork, that would be excellent.
Alright, then we need a motion to close public hearing on 113 North Street.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, and we will work on the decision and make a copy available to you as well, in draft form.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Good job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Good night.
Yes, you too.
Good night, thank you.
Norway Farms, next.
Norway Farms.
Norway Farms, yes.
We are rolling, kind of rolling.
Rolling.
The sun's still up.
It's always the first morning.
Good evening, again.
Oh!
I neglected to introduce myself, Elizabeth Maitland, representing Rob and Jane Keane, the principals in Norway Farms Drive LLC.
You don't want to set up for you, Rob?
Are we coordinated? Oh, yes, we are, I did not notice that.
Team colors?
Team colors, yeah, team Norway Farm. So, we are here to hopefully get the board's approval of both the agreement and a covenant that I have drafted, and town council has reviewed and revised a bit, and I think we're in total agreement as to both of those documents that I think protect the town's interests, as we record with our conversation at the last meeting.
So, what corresponded back and forth, essentially, the agreement are the terms of which were then incorporated into the special permit, the agreement were, which included the payout schedule, the terms, the dollar amount, as well as the timing.
Keeps the town protected.
What's that?
Keeps the town protected.
Correct, yeah. And then, the covenant is really assurance of making sure that the security to protect the town, to make sure that they fulfill their obligation. And so, the covenant will be part of the decision as a condition, and the covenant has been, I'll just have to get from attorney DeLuca, the clean version, not the redline version, but it has been reviewed by attorney Maitland and Mr. Kane, Mrs. Kane, and so it's acceptable to them, we'll have that in the final decision. And then, the other conditions would be that the, of course, the subdivision will have to be modified, because the...
Because we designated...
You designated a lot.
A lot, yes, okay.
And there's a...
So, I'll do a modification on that.
Correct, so I'll have to remove that designation on there.
That one.
And then, I think that was it.
I think that's, I think that will wrap up this. And as soon as we have the signed documents, we'll deliver the check. I'm assuming that that's coming to the planning board, or is that going to the Norfolk Housing Trust?
The trust.
The trust, oh, there she is. Did you get the money?
Sorry, I was at another meeting.
Okay, that's good, just wanted to be certain of that.
Directly to the trust?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Because I had even had a conversation, was it with you or was it with David, as to whether the Norfolk, that they should be a party to this agreement.
Oh, I see.
The consensus was, no, they don't need to be a party, you can designate the beneficiary of the funds however you wish, it's within your prerogative. So, but town council was terrific, he came right back and got this done before his holiday, so it's nice to have it done.
And we did, we did have some discussions, just clarification, and we'll maybe perhaps look at the formula, the methodology at a later date, relative to the bylaw.
Yeah, yeah.
I know that was an issue that came up at the last meeting, so, I know, I've spoken offline to a couple of members, so...
I know some towns have a fixed dollar amount, and that might be, I mean, from the preliminary planning point of view, that might be extraordinarily helpful to developer in knowing what his obligation might be if he's starting to buy out. Of course, you should amend that from time to time when you review your rules and regulations, but that certainly, I think, would be a lot easier from my perspective, because all the calculations that they did, in conformity with that, at the end of the day, they really didn't amount to much, because they're impractical, you know, the numbers work that way, reality doesn't.
Very true.
Yeah. But I think this is a very good, a very good resolution, is my opinion.
Okay, then we need a motion to close the public hearing on Norway Farms' special permit.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now, we need a vote to grant the special permit on the affordable housing, including the covenant and the payment schedule.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And as Rich said, we'll work on the paperwork and move this thing along, close it up.
Alright, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much, all.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll take that check.
Sidewalk fund.
Alright, 81 Park.
81, yeah, 81 Park.
Alright, 81 Park Street, Berkshire Street, I'm sorry.
You can read the hearing though.
I'm sorry, yeah, 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 well, that's fine, that's the first item, then please do.
They won't.
Notice is hereby given that in accordance with Mass Terminal Law, Section 48, and the Norfolk zoning bylaws E2H, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July 9th, 2019, at 7:20 PM in Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall. One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, regarding a special permit application for property located at 81 Park Street and Berkshire Street in Norfolk, Mass, O2056. The applicant, DePlacido Development Corporation of Rentham, Mass, is requesting a special permit for an estate lot. The property is located in the R1 zoning district, reference assessor's map six, block 45, block 34, showing a proposed 218,797 square foot parcel. The plan and application are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during the hours of 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
Okay, very good. Rick, how are you?
Good evening, doing well, thank you. Rick Goodrow with United Consultants here this evening with Tom DePlacido, the applicant for the proposed project. Mr. Chairman, I do have some 11 by 17 cards.
Sure, okay.
I prefer those, I see the really small ones there.
Yeah. Pass it down, there you go. Thank you. Is that enough? Good enough?
So, I have a colored-up plan here at full size, which basically depicts the proposal. The property was created in 1998 with a piece added from the 19 Berkshire Street property to create a 50-foot-wide frontage, as well as a 50-foot-wide area from the roadway back towards where the lot widens up, where the proposed house will be situated. Property contains a little over 218,000 square feet of land, of which 106,000 square feet is determined to be uplands. The proposal is to construct a house here, which we've highlighted in red, septic system, which is highlighted in green, septic tank, distribution box, leaching area, that has been permitted through the Board of Health, we have a permit for that. Proposed underground water service and underground electric, telephone, and cable, television connections will be made from the street to the house, thus, all of the utilities will be underground, there will be no over... thus all of the utilities will be underground, there will be no overhead utilities proposed. Driveway access will be from Berkshire Street in this area here, the proposed driveway will connect to the, to the proposed house. Garage is proposed as well. We have proposed a limit of work in silk fence, which we've highlighted here in yellow, that demarcates the extent of the work to be completed on the lot, and as, that proposal would not require any work within any wetland jurisdictional areas, and thus a wetland permit would not be necessary for the purposes of going forward with the project. We have provided you with the setback distances, which show that the proposed house is greater than 50 feet from all of the property lines, which is a requirement for the special permit. The applicant has completed a special permit application, which identifies the responses to all of the special permit criteria. He's certainly happy to answer any questions with respect to the plan or the application, thank you.
Distance from the septic to the adjacent lot, I can't see because my, I'm so.
Sixty-five, a little over 65 feet.
See it on the second sheet.
Thank you.
It is hard to read the distance, the dimensions on the 11-by-17s.
Where is the wetland area that you're talking about?
The wetland area is, that flagged area.
AES?
Yes.
What does that stand for?
Uh, Russ Waldron.
That's the new one on me.
Yeah, Russ Waldron.
So that is the wetland line? What does that stand for, Tom?
No idea.
Okay.
It's the initials of the company.
Not just me, all right.
Applied Ecological Services, I think is the name of this company.
But that's the wetland line.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Just how we demarcated the flags.
So do you normally put the people's wells from adjacent lots, if they overlap the lot?
What is that?
Should the well from the adjacent lot be circled?
Yeah, it's got to be between 100 and 200 feet, based on the perp rate.
So that means that it's not entering that 200-foot circle, isn't entering the property. I think the adjacent lot is right on Park Street, if I'm recalling correctly, the adjacent house, I don't know how far back it goes, but this might be. I was just asking John for clarity, normally the circles are here for wells on adjacent lots.
These lots are serviced by town water, if they're on the.
Even the adjacent lot as well, that's on Park Street, and going up Maple.
Maple is not.
Park Street, no, I'm not, no.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, this lot is connected to town water, as well as our lot is proposed to be connected to town water.
And so then there's other lots that are, what, on Maple, and, because I'm looking at the small image. So there's a lot on the corner of Park and Maple, and then going up Maple is probably another lot that might have a, and you're saying all those lots are on town water?
Um, the Park Street lots, aye, I'm not sure if they're on town water.
Worried about putting the house within a distance from the well?
The septic, to the well.
It's got to be a drinking well, though.
But if the septic has been approved, presumably the Board of Health has examined that issue.
Okay, yes.
And said that this town water, or that the septic field is, exceeds the distance.
Okay, it would have been on that plan.
Yeah.
Is this a clear lot, or is it wooded?
It's wooded.
So what's the driveway going, slightly down and then up?
Correct.
I can't read your writing.
Goes from approximately elevation 215 at the street, down to a low point of about 211 and a half, and then begins to climb back up to a high point right about here, and then slight elevation drop down to the garage, relatively flat.
So are you, is the folks from, the Butters here, the 19 Berkshire Street people here?
Any Butters here?
Yes.
19 Berkshire here?
We're 23.
23, the most affected, I think, is Botlet, is Botlet here? What are you guys going to do, just to give them protection, you're going to be clearing the whole 50-foot driveway, Tom?
We would just clear enough for the driveway, what we need for grading, actually, Botlet actually is contributing a 10-foot to actually create this lot.
Oh, he is?
Yes, so he's very well aware of that, he signed the application.
There's four houses here.
All right, so he's not really concerned about declaring of the driveway, if he's contributing?
Correct.
I use the term contributing loosely. Where is the nearest clearing going to be done to the, the folks at 52 and 50 Maple, is that going to be just a septic field? Is that going to be, is the breakout going to be the limit for clearing of the septic field? I'm assuming the folks at Maple here are worried about, am I right?
Yeah, my septic's in my backyard, I mean, my well's in my backyard.
So where is going to be the, the limit of disturbance, as far as where that septic field's going to be reached? I see the breakout, but the breakout's a good distance from the lot line, right?
Correct, breakout's about 15 feet, I mean, you know.
Right, but how far from the lot line is the breakout?
Uh, about 50 feet.
50, so is that, is that all going to stay wooded?
We're only going to clear what is shown on the plan, so if it's not shown as far as being required for clearing for breakout, then it would stay wooded.
All right, so can we get a, can we get a no-cut line around that, around the, around the 15-foot breakout for the septic, so that we assure that that won't be cleared? Have you guys been to Concom with this? Do you need to go to Concom with this?
No, we're not working in any jurisdictions.
The things are so small and tight, I can't read where the buffer zone line is or not.
The buffer zone line is here, and the limit of work is the yellow line just outside of it.
So you get 15 feet to clear off of the breakout, right?
Yep, yes.
And you can, you can leave it at that, and leave the rest of, the rest of the woods left?
Yeah, we can come from the end of the line here, and basically come right around the breakout like that.
Do you folks understand what he's talking about? Do you want to come up and take a look at what he's talking about?
Come up and take a look at the drawing, so you can see what he's referring to.
Rick, can you explain to these folks really, how much is going to be left wooded between their property and their house?
So we have a yellow line here that we have proposed to show the limit of work towards the wetland area, and what the.
This is, um, this is Park Street, yeah?
Yep, Park Street lots are over there.
Maple is south.
I'm sorry, this is Maple, this is Park.
So this is where, the wetland is here, right?
The wetland's over there, yep.
Yeah, my well is right here, right, probably here, actually, so where's the septic going?
I don't know.
All right, my well is only 15 feet to top of water.
Top of what water?
The, in the well.
Oh, okay.
I have a shallow well, that's what's my main concern, is it's going to be my wall of water quality, is that going to stay the same?
No.
So that's a drinking well?
Yes.
How many feet are you from the drinking well, Rich?
I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to.
We should.
My well's in my well. That's 50.
You have?
Yeah.
Betsy, did they get a septic from you yet?
Yes.
They did, so the well, the well, drinking wells are all set.
I would think so.
Or they weren't, what's that?
Or they were.
Wade doesn't miss, Wade doesn't miss much. Wade doesn't miss much.
So that's, so I'm right here, so it directly affects to where, because my well, depending on where the lot would be here, would be somewhere in the.
The distance to that septic has to be from the well.
It's based on the perp rate, if the perp rate between 10 and 30, as it gets, if the perp rate gets shorter, it's going to get closer, so it has to be.
It's anywhere from 100 and, 100 to 150 feet, depending on the, depending on the perp rate and the distance field, it's the groundwater elevation.
The soil there is very, it's a lot of clay, holds water real high. A lot of taming inside.
As well as where he senses. He's welling on it.
Yes.
To show that clearance, yeah.
Just to give you an idea of.
Rick, the Board of Health has examined these, this issue, right?
Yes, sir.
In order for you to get your permit, these gentlemen.
Have they done any testing on our wells, or have they taken into account where our well is versus where just his property is?
They do, the longer the distance meets, then that's the only criterion that they have to meet.
Yeah.
They don't have to do any testing of your well or anything, they just have to be between 100, 150 feet from your well, with their septic field, is.
Is it where the end of their leaching field ends, or is it?
Yes, yes, exactly.
He wouldn't have got his permit unless it met those requirements.
So we're trying to keep the, the land from his septic field over towards your lots, all wooded and left natural.
Yeah.
Just to stop that you run off.
So where do you give a bottom of property to here, you build this above the property here?
So that drawing circles on it that shows other people's lives never comes before this more.
It can, yeah.
This doesn't even count, though, so that's small plans, it doesn't make any difference.
Because it seems like the public.
You can request it if you'd want to.
Is this the only public hearing where the Butters would be able to see that information?
Yeah.
Okay, then maybe we should request that.
Is there a chance that we'd be able to take some time to speak with them about this staff project, so we have a better idea, instead of tying up the entire meeting, saying, hey, we have 8,000 questions, some of our questions might be answered, but we.
Tommy, are you willing to meet the neighbors and go over the plan, Tom?
Rick, yeah, Rick is willing to do that, that's fine.
That'd be great, yeah, then you can.
Might be helpful to get.
Ask all their questions, and make sure they're, they're not going to be disturbed, their property does.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to get the houses, the wells, and the no-cut line on the drawing, so.
The no-cut line, you're getting.
In the radii, too.
Sure.
So maybe you guys can have all your questions answered.
We should confirm.
By these folks, okay?
If we did any testing on our wells now, we get the water quality, and then if that changes after the wells.
That's really tough to prove, but that would be a thing between you and the developer, the planning board doesn't deal with that.
Right.
But if we can get those distances on the, on the drawings before you have your meeting, at least you'll have the information to talk about.
All right, we'll add the no-cut line.
Yep.
So do you want to.
Can you just let Rich know the, the result of your meeting, so if everybody's got their questions answered, we can get this whole thing wrapped up and get a decision made for the next meeting, just to move it along?
Sure.
Okay?
Sure.
Okay, so it doesn't tie anybody longer.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Rich, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Are you continuing, are you trying to?
No, we need to.
Continue, okay.
Yeah. Continue, yeah.
Yeah, are you, are you, we need to make sure, is the 5th okay?
Yeah, yeah.
And then Aaron, too?
John, is the 5th okay with you? Aaron said it was fine.
Okay.
Chad said it was fine.
Chad's fine, okay, so the meeting will be August 5th?
Will be August 5th.
Continue to.
Our expectation would be that the meeting with the neighborhood would happen before that meeting.
Yeah, so then if it works out fine, then they can let Rich know beforehand, so we could.
We could wrap it up then?
Yeah. I'll be in a gunk with that Friday, so I don't know.
You want to move it in, time-wise, it doesn't have to be.
The Friday after?
What are you referring to?
Friday that week, yeah.
To continue this?
He means the.
Monday, then, right?
Continue up to the 5th, yeah.
Yeah, no, time-wise, you want us to stick at 7:20 or?
Oh, oh.
Or we can go to 7, or we haven't put anything.
We haven't put anything on the agenda, so we can put it up front, can't we?
Sure.
So motion to continue to August 5th at 7:20?
Seven.
Sorry, 7, sorry, 7 o'clock, sorry.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hill Street on at 7:10, then.
See you on August 5th.
All righty, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
32 Frederickson?
32 Frederickson, yep.
Notice is hereby given that in accordance with Mass Journal Law Section 48 and the Norfolk zoning bylaws E28, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July 9th, 2019, at 7:30 PM in Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. Relative to an estate lot application for property located at 32 Frederickson Road in Norfolk, Mass, 02056. The applicant is Nathan S. Morse, and the property is located in the R1 zoning district, reference assessor's map 13 block 46, lot 163, showing a 217,822 square foot parcel. A copy of the plan, application, and other miscellaneous information are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular office hours.
All right, anyone here from the audience to speak to that? No, okay, well, this is a previously approved plan, whose permit expired, right?
Correct.
And is there any, to the best of your knowledge, any changes to the plan that we previously approved?
Nope, everything is.
The same.
As is, the only thing is the lapse of the time.
Only thing is the lapse of the time, all right, so then we need a motion to, to approve the estate lot here, 32 Frederickson, correct?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
A discussion before we make that.
Why are we approving it, just because we had discussion on it previously?
It was, it came in front of us in two years ago. When was it?
The original warrant was issued in 2012.
So why are we approving something that we talked about two years ago?
No, no.
When we approved this estate lot, since that time, did he put in the driveway and the septic field and all that?
I don't think so, I don't.
He went to conservation, because they were putting in the driveway and maneuvering around a room, pools on the side there, and I know that he had a septic system designed.
Yeah, he hasn't put in the septic system, yeah, he's got a, he's got a permit, I believe he did put in the driveway, but he has not gotten a building permit. So his, the previous owners of the property had been keeping up with their extensions. They sold the property to this Nathaniel Morse, the permit, I believe, expired November of 2018.
Yes.
So therefore, we've got a lapse in the permit.
It meets all the criteria of the bylaw, so it isn't, except for the fact that they didn't exercise it within two years, and then they requested extensions to exercise it, and so now, because it's outside that timeframe, they need to reapply to reissue the permit.
Should they be presenting what they're applying for?
It's the same.
Yeah, I wasn't here two years ago.
Well, they have, I mean.
It's the same, it's the same, it's that, that plan's been reported, the registry of deeds, just that they have special permit who's.
Right, this is what.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have the plan? I, I got a copy, I don't know.
Yeah.
That's it, there it is, right there.
So that's the existing lot? Estate lot, that's the.
The only thing different now, I think there is a home there to the right of the driveway.
So this, there's a house on this lot here.
To the right of the driveway going in, there's a.
Over here?
No, it's true, yeah, I actually owned that lot, and I sold it to folks that built the home, and that's probably three, four years old now. And to the left of that is part of the subdivision, the.
Frederickson Road.
Precisely, yeah, the subdivision, so those are, those are the changes since.
This lot came off of this one.
Yes, that's right.
Yes, right.
So Aaron, originally, when they created it back in 2012, this lot came off of here, was part of that originally. That's what was the, the parent of the estate lot that was created, so that was created in 2012.
Why is it in our interest to approve this?
To have, to have the property developed, so that the property ends up in the tax roll.
It does comply with all of the, the rules for estate lot.
So wouldn't it be in the property owner's interest to be here to get his approval, or her approval?
If it was my plan, I would, but.
It's different, yeah.
Have you talked to them already, Rich?
I'll just explain.
What was there, there was, there was an issue, last time they actually thought they could refile it, and they didn't realize that it expired, am I thinking of the right circumstance?
That's, that is the right circumstance, yes, you're right.
Okay.
If you.
So they waited too long to refile or something?
He didn't realize.
The time expired.
The lapse, yeah.
That the permit had expired, he was getting ready to. That the permit had expired, he was getting ready to file for his building permit.
Should they be here? Yeah, they should be here, that would be in their best interest.
Well, at least for the fact that if some of the members would know that had questions, they should be here to field the questions.
Uh, if you're, I think, it probably would behoove not to do anything tonight, I think you're.
I'm just not familiar with it all, so I don't even know what I'd be voting on, so.
Yeah.
And no one's here to present it, so I'm not going to vote. Until I educate myself on the topic.
And they had, it wasn't just that they let it lapse once, they had refiled many times. This has, has this been opened? This has been an open application for a very long time? Is that what I'm recalling?
Well.
It was extensions.
Twelve, right?
Yeah.
Two thousand twelve.
Two thousand twelve, okay.
This is six years old.
Six years old.
Right, and.
With two different owners.
Right, there's a, a new owner.
Two different owners, one person sold it.
Okay.
John, I think you need to, uh, take over this, I need to recuse myself, I have, I, I know this person.
Okay. In that case, whatever.
And Aaron's abstaining? Is there a way I can get out of vote?
Well, we don't have, uh, we don't have enough, we don't have enough votes for special permit.
No, we don't have enough, no, we don't.
That way.
I don't think, Walter, you don't, do you have any financial?
No.
Just somebody you know?
I don't have any, pardon me? Do I have any?
I don't think he needs to abst, I don't think he needs to refuse himself if this just.
Well, do you?
It's Walter's choice whether he feels comfortable or not, he doesn't technically have to, if he's uncomfortable, he.
Well, I just don't feel like I should vote on something that is owned by someone that I know personally and have known for years, so.
Sure.
I think I should recuse, recuse myself.
All right, so in that case, I think we should move to continue this until our next month with, uh, suggestion that the applicant come in and, uh, just explain the plan to, uh, the new board members.
Yes.
So we have a motion to continue to our next meeting, which is August fif- fifth.
So go at seven ten?
Seven ten.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all set, thanks, Walter.
So if we have to vote on this, everyone, you know, has to, Chad has to be here to vote on this.
That's correct.
Yes.
Because we need four votes.
That's correct.
Okay.
Actually, and, uh.
Chad will have to make sure he, he watches the tape.
Yep.
If our associate were president, he wouldn't be able to vote on it.
If he's, uh.
Okay.
Is Peter on vacation?
I think so, with that.
Is Peter away this week, associate member?
They haven't appointed him yet.
They haven't, oh, they haven't.
The selectmen?
Right, I think they were doing that tonight.
Tonight upstairs?
Perhaps?
Hope so.
Okay.
Okay, but he can vote if he's here.
So he'll have to get sworn in.
So each, each person has to go and actually look at what's taken place to.
Just, just chat.
Just chat, okay.
Well, Peter, if he's gonna, if he gets appointed, then.
Okay.
Nobody's notified me, and I checked with Carol, so.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'm not that I'm aware of.
All right, let's move on, Seven Shire Drive next. Snowmore permit, earth removal permit, special permit.
You should have drafts in your packet.
Should have drafts, um, I know I sent it off to Charlie, he had some comments.
Just, yeah, spelling.
I think we, uh.
Yep, I think I took the R that.
Took all the spelling. I guess you clean up the, your comments as well, Walter.
Yep, she's got the comments that I sent in yet?
Yes.
Okay, good, all right. Okay, um, so aside from, um, accepting the, uh, special permit, uh, any other open issues, Rich, that we need to address before we do that?
No, it was just the, the decision.
All right, so we need, need a, uh, motion to accept the decision on the site plan and special permit application for Seven Shire Drive.
We voted on a site plan approval and a special permit?
And a stormwater management and an earth removal.
And do we need separate votes on each of these?
I think the se, the special permit requires a different number of votes than the site plan, so.
Yeah, it's a four.
No, actually, it requires both, your regs require four.
On the site plan?
Yes, so it's the same.
All right. So, let's, uh, let's have a motion to accept the site plan special permit application.
Move it.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we need one for, uh, for earth removal, all right? Sir?
Yes.
All right, we need another motion to accept the earth removal permit.
So move it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now we need one for the, uh.
Snowmore.
Need one more?
The?
Snowmore?
Yeah, the snowmore.
Yeah, okay. Need a motion to accept the, uh, snowmore permit.
So move it.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we can.
Should just say the friendly amendment, as drafted.
As drafted, yes, all right, as drafted, and with the, with the amendments.
With the amendments.
That our secretary is incorporating into the document.
Correct, yep.
So any questions, sir?
So my laws at the next meeting decide this?
Yeah, we'll have them, uh.
On the way until Tuesday, I'll email you the, um, the word, uh, versions of the, uh, decisions, so you can reproduce those on the mylaws.
Yeah, I, I did it from the draft, so we'll just check it out, actually, I had someone do it yesterday.
Okay.
But the draft is going to be amended, right?
Yeah, I said to check it and make sure it matches.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you the final.
And they'll, and they'll sign the originals tonight?
Mm-hmm, I have those prepared.
Yeah.
That's.
That's it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Now, we do have the, uh, the final version of the one oh two Cleveland Street, fifteen Fruit Street, special permit decision.
Okay. This is, this is the one that just came out?
Yeah, the, they were, um, getting their conservation commission met, so last meeting, what was it, the ninth? June, the last, what was the date?
The last conservation meeting?
Plan board was, uh, oh, yeah, it was eleven. So they, they got their approval on the twelfth from the conservation commission, so. You, that was the only thing you're waiting on?
Yep. I, I just, this draft just came out today, is that right? This, this decision?
No, I, uh, no, I think I did that for you last month.
Yeah.
Okay, so I must have read it and sent you whatever, whatever comments I had, if any.
Yeah, the only thing I changed on that draft is the date, is today, I put today's date in it.
Okay.
Yeah, the edits, actually, that's maybe the edits right after the meeting, and we just updated the dates.
Gotcha, all right, so we're prepared to, to approve it and sign it tonight.
Correct.
All right, so we need a motion to accept the, uh, special permit decision number two thousand nineteen dash zero two, uh, for one oh two Cleveland Street.
I'll move.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, aye, 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 all right, okay. All right, sir. Twilson Farm Fox Run Subdivision.
That's the Shire Drive if you want to start.
Just sign.
Discussion completion of subdivision and updating the bond estimate. They're ducking us, they agreed at the table two months ago to, to cancel two bonds and put a new one in place. And, and they haven't done anything in that regard, correct?
I thought it benefited them in some way to do this, and they were the ones pushing to do it. And then it seems like they went radio silent on you.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, it wasn't something.
At least it seemed as if it was to their benefit, I didn't see any reason why. It, it wasn't.
John, you need a plan?
If you remember, they were, they were working to try to get it accepted. So I reached out to, to Mark, I haven't heard back from them, I'll.
And you were still working on them with the Hitlers, but that isn't really relevant to the, uh, this is a different one?
Yes, I don't know.
That's the Cleveland Street.
Right, that's a separate from the bond. But, uh, but they do need to, they do need to take care of the punch list to ultimately get the rule accepted, so. I don't know if it feels like they're avoiding us? But maybe they're busy and they're not.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
I feel all of a sudden they're going to come out of them.
And you're dealing directly with, what's his name, Mark Fostriano or something?
Yes, yeah, well, John Engle as well, so they kind of, they're working in tandem, but, uh.
And so you got two of these for me to sign, too?
I don't really have much to.
So not much is going on?
I have.
No.
Two of them, right? They came out this afternoon.
I do have, uh.
From, from what I can see, they did the things that they said they were going to do, they planted the robberies, they had someone come in and spray grass. Hydroseed areas, I don't know, even, I'm, I'm actually surprised that they did that. So in the, in the wintertime, plow trucks go over the corner, you know, of your drive to the street. So it seems not like on both sides of my drive, they ripped up, you know, and I got mud, so I go out and I sprinkle fast-growing seed every year. But they had someone come by and spray it, they sprayed everyone's, any, any little piece that was missing, they went up the street and sprayed it, I was kind of surprised at that. But they still didn't do some things, like picking up the silt area. Um, and I, and I don't think much, much of it matters at all. There's very little that they have to do.
I think I'm believing in that, so.
Yeah, we, we'll take that five minute comment right here.
Sorry.
Call in the medics, right? All right, let's move on here, uh.
All right, so just to get back to this, you want to get back to Toils End real quick, but, uh.
I thought you were done, but, okay, go ahead.
Well, I just got to reach out to them and get it answered.
Yeah, reach out to them, is right.
Well, actually get them to engage in response, that's more like it.
It, it didn't diminish our position one way or the other, as far as the bond, right?
No, it doesn't, so.
So, we were, they, they were asking for it, for some reason, we didn't see initiative, and we thought we would do it. It's like combining, is it combining two bonds or they rewriting them?
No, essentially rewriting, because we want, they wanted to keep the bond that was in place, but the items that we want to have bonded going forward are different than that, that original punch list.
Yep.
So we wanted to be, that's why we wanted to really remove and replace it that way.
We only cared about the road at this point?
Uh, it was road, yeah, the roadway, but it was also some of the subgrade infrastructure. So in the event something were to happen and we had to exercise the bond, we'd have the right to do that, as opposed to them trying to stall off a claim against the bond if we didn't have it itemized, because when you have surety bonds, with insurance companies, you know, protect, protect the town's interest to make sure we don't get caught up, so. That was the, you know, the notion of swapping amount, the dollar amounts were, I think the dollar, it was a little bit higher?
Yeah, it was a little bit higher.
A little bit higher, but it wasn't significant?
No, and, and they didn't object to that.
No, they didn't object to that.
Not at the table, anyway.
No, so, but, uh, but they do have some remaining punch on it, I have to, uh, send them a, an updated punch list, which was, uh, there was a temporary electrical service between two houses that they haven't removed on, uh, on Hem, on the Hemingway.
Okay.
No, not on Hemingway, I'm sorry, Almore Street.
Yeah.
And then there's a Verizon, so.
Okay.
There are annoyances to a neighbor, you know, to a resident.
Oh, I know where you're talking, there's a post coming up, like, a post with a, it's not even functional.
No, it's not, but, so it should be removed, and then there's, this is a few things, but.
Okay.
We'll see if we can get a better answer for August fifth. Um, Sandy Noel will take care of it, the August meeting.
Yeah, do we need to make any continuations or any motions to continue or a suggestion?
No.
Okay, all right. Endorse three David Road site plans.
Correct, yep, so we.
We have a bunch of mylaws to.
No, we have David Road mylar, right?
Yep, I have the David Road mylar.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all set to go.
Don't have the mylar for Five Phillips, it's ready to be endorsed?
Mm-hmm.
Um, or two seventy-three.
Or two seventy-three, they're both.
So just three David, huh?
Yeah, it's the only one we have, the mylars.
Okay.
Um, so what I thought, well, let, let's go to the, well, let me finish it up this way. If you want to vote to, and you already voted, you could vote to endorse it tonight, and then once I get the mylaws, just come in the office and.
Okay.
Sign them.
Yeah, all right.
So we don't have to wait till August fifth.
Yeah, all right, so, um, let's, let's take them one at a time, a motion to endorse the, uh, Three David Road site plan.
So moved.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to endorse the two seventy-three Dedham Street site plan.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And a motion to endorse the Five Phillips Way site plans.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we will sign them, send one tonight and the others shortly. Eighteen Union Street, review and vote decision for minor site plan modifications.
So you call that was a.
Yes, this, this note here, it's the eliminate the steps of the town hall property. We discussed this last time when Tommy was here.
Let me get it, please.
East crosswalk on the Circuit of the Drive in front of Town Hall will be replaced with a Cobble Crosswalk to match the other crosswalk to Town Center. And the South Crosswalk on Liberty Lane in front of Eighteen Union Street will be replaced with an ADA compliant crosswalk. That's what we agreed, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we needed to, a vote to consider those minor modifications, uh, motion.
Motion, so move it.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we need a motion to approve the minor modifications, so move it.
All right.
And all who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we'll sign this and give it back to you, Nancy.
Uh, I don't have any fee schedule changes to discuss with the board tonight, I have to defer to the. Defer the fees discussion to the August meeting.
All right.
Um, and as far as, uh, discussion relative to zoning bylaws, um, I did email out a pretty lengthy packet, some draft suggestions, recommendations for the B one. Um, the B one committee will, has a meeting next Tuesday evening to go over some of the draft recommendations. And then, I think probably be worth discussing at the August fifth meeting, those, some of those recommendations.
Is, is next Tuesday's meeting intended to be a discussion between the B one group and the planning board?[1686.01] Is, is next Tuesday's meeting intended to be a discussion between the B one group and the planning board?[1510.62]